Nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, we will have comments from the audience regarding agenda items. We ask that you state your name and address for the record and that you limit your comments to five minutes. Would anyone care to address the board at this time? Would anyone like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, then we'll move to our approval of our consent agenda, item number four. We have on the consent agenda, A, approval of acceptance of open enrollment applications of current attending Whittenall students; B, approval of class size parameters for use in determining open enrollment seats; C, approval of open enrollment seats for 2015-16; D, approval of Policy 462 Wisconsin Technical Excellence Scholarship; E, approval of January vouchers and vouchers payable; F, approval of December 15th, 2014 and January 12th, 2015 special board meeting minutes; G, approval of January 19th, 2015 special board meeting minutes; H, approval of staff retirements; I, approval of 2015-16 school calendar. Before we approve the consent agenda, would the board like to pull any items out?
A, B, and C.
A, B, and C.
And I would like to pull I.
Oh, and I. Alright, school calendar, alright. With that, we will, I would entertain a motion to approve items D, E, F, G, and H.
We'll move.
Then moved. Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. So we will now take up consent agenda item A, approval of acceptance of open enrollment.
Yes.
I'd actually like to discuss A, B, and C together since I don't really see them as mutually exclusive.
Okay, that'd be fine. Why don't you, I think they're gonna have to be three separate votes though, so...
They may have to be three separate votes.
They'll still have to be.
That's fine, but I think it's one discussion, at least to begin with.
Why don't you go ahead and share your concerns?
Okay, so, I mean, do you want me to explain why I think they're together, or do you want me to just...
No, just jump in.
Okay, thanks.
What's, because these are...
Okay, so...
Ready for approval, but we would have to make amendments if we want to change them, correct?
Just wanted, that was what we would have to do.
Okay, so go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So it just seems to me that overall, what we're doing is setting a target class size and then trying to fill up that size with open enrollments. I don't, here is, I'm concerned about setting, if we're gonna base how many open enrollment seats we offer based on setting a target class size, and that's attracting how many students we project to be in there without open enrollment and coming up with that open, coming up with that open enrollment number, then I think we're going about things wrong. I think we need to look at how many students for the best education we should have in a class size, not, and then, and then work it from there, which means in a sense, we're already oversold.
I have two thoughts to kinda take along.
Mm-hmm.
You're going, you know, my... Was that, like, last year, our norm, and I'm gonna focus on the middle school right now because the number that had, had kinda come out so strongly was at 29 seats for the grade eight, okay? So last year, we were looking at, you know, for each grade, 168 was the norm, and now, and that was, it was based on six sections of 28 for 168 per grade. So this year, we're now, we've now changed to seven sections of 27, or 189 students. So all of a sudden, now our norm at the middle school has increased by 21 students. So I guess that was the first, you know, flag that kinda came up, so now we're gonna infuse 60 more students over there.
Seventy, yeah, over there.
You know, over three, between the three grades. So that is a concern, that why all of a sudden is our norm increasing? Then my second concern kind of is, well, we're, you know, if you look at our numbers, sixth and seventh grade, we're locked into those totals anyway. I mean, we can't, there are current open enrollment students, we're not gonna tell them they can't come back.
Right.
And we already have residents, so we really can't do anything above sixth and seventh grade, hardly. I mean, seventh grade, they're asking for five more open enrollment spots. So those are already to the max, and we do have residents still that come in.
Yep.
You know, so you're already above the new norm, which is 189, or right at the, pretty close to the new norm at 189, without even taking into account that any new residents could come into our district in sixth and seventh grade. So that's a concern for me. And then eighth grade is lower, if you're looking at the new norm. And we're asking for 29, which would be 189, and again, if we do all 29, you're not taking into account that we would get any, you know, any additional residents, which we could very well get at eighth grade, coming into the system. So I, I don't know, I mean, that 29, I don't think we need that 29. I just think that's a lot, and I just am worried that the trend of adding more students at the middle school or more per grade, you know, I don't know what that's going, I don't know. I mean, I have no history as far as class size, whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. As a parent, I'm thinking that doesn't sound so great, but...
Yeah, I go along, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let me go give everybody a chance to talk, 'cause, and then we'll take a vote. How's that though?
No, I think a vote's too soon.
When everybody's done talking, right? Go ahead.
Why is there, why do we get this such a variance for eighth grade? What happened, why wasn't it gradually brought up to the 189?
'Cause even though you might say you have 29 seats, you might only get 15 applicants. So you can't totally match it. So that, the 29 is basically the, if you're gonna do the formula of seven of 27, then you have the 189, like Eileen said, and then you would open up to the DPI, 29 open enrollment seats. But, we're not gonna get 29 applicants at eighth grade. We rarely do. We get a lot at kindergarten, first grade, a lot at sixth grade, but not a lot at seventh, eighth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth.
Okay, so why didn't we address this issue at the sixth grade?
We, we had a ton listed for sixth grade two years ago and didn't get them all filled.
Okay.
That class already has 42, I mean, that class does have 42 open enrollment.
Already?
Yeah, I mean, but it's just, if you look at the residents, it's really low. It's just probably a little worse here, is what it is.
More questions?
Well, I think that if we, if we do allow these seats, we need to have targeted teaching back, or a zero hour, something to help, 'cause I, I'm being told that the open enrollment kids nowadays are, have more needs. It may not be as...
Been told the same.
Yeah, may have more needs and need a little more attention. And as we give more attention to those kids, it takes away from the current kids. And targeted teaching is not, is no longer there. We have a study hall, so I think that needs to be it. And then my other opinion is, we can't hold, if we're gonna bring these kids in and we don't know who they are, how can we hold Lynn's feet to the fire when DPI, you know, when the grades go down?
I guess I gotta go on the whole discussion on open enrollment then, which I didn't wanna do in public, but I will.
Yeah.
Number one, I have an email from Brian Borden, who does the scheduling. April 28th, 2014. Hi, Dr. Olson, please find another new schedule. The pros of this schedule, reduced class sizes, common planning per discipline, both core and applied teachers have one and a half preps, reduced intervention class size, what you call targeted teaching. Cons, reduced class time from 53 minutes to 50 minutes. Please offer any thoughts. Thanks, Brian. It's what we originally tried to do. If you look at the schedule that's been in place for the last 10 years, it's, it was the best attempt to, to do what people thought was best for the kids at that time. However, you had common planning time by grade level. If I'm a, the sixth grade math teacher, and I'm trying to teach you a concept in algebra and you're just not getting it, so I wanna talk to a colleague, I'm not gonna talk to my sixth grade social studies or science teacher to figure out the best way to do it. We're trying to change things so that you have common planning time by department rather than by grade level. So I can go to the seventh grade algebra teacher and say, just not getting this across to the kids. That seventh grade algebra teacher might say, well, you know what, this is what works for me, give this a shot. So you have a lot more common planning across subject area. If you look at the last two, we're constantly, everything we're doing, we're trying to do to improve academic achievement. The last two report cards, every building exceeded expectations except for one. So we're, and that's the last two district, the new state report card things. If you do that going back under the WKCE, it goes back at least seven, eight years before that. So you need to come up with something that's not, and we have outstanding teachers, we have good administration. What we have to do is come up with a better way of getting the information to the kids so they perform as well at middle school as they did at elementary and that they do as high school. So we sat down and said, okay, what's a two-prong approach, like I said last Monday, that we could address this issue. Lynn said the PBIS she thought would be a positive addition because if the kids are interacting positively, it should have a positive impact on academics. The scheduling for, for smaller core class sizes was part of the other part of it, along with the subject level common planning time. So as far as what's, what's that impact on open enrollment, you know, how the conversation goes together, I suppose everything fits together 'cause it's, it's all cohesive one way or the other. As far as, when we first proposed open enrollment, we had, we had close, if you go back far enough, we had almost more kids going out than we had coming in. We've changed that over the last 10 years. I think, and when we started it, we said we wanted to balance, use open enrollment to balance enrollment, so that we could keep the same number of programs or increase our programs. If we didn't have open enrollment, we would not have the number of AP classes we have at the high school, 'cause we'd have fewer teachers, we'd have fewer programs. So one of the things I, that Joel did was he said, how many kids have we lost over the last 10 years, and if we bulked up our open enrollment above and beyond that. Over 10 years, I think it was, there was a difference of one. What were the numbers? It's three...
Three seventy-eight out, three seventy-nine in.
So our, our resident count went down over this period of time. But when you look at the demographics, it's an aging population. So now, next, or two weeks from now, when we have the presentation, they're gonna say what their predictions are for that to recover. Well, if we dumped programs as they're recovering, it's gonna be hard to get those programs back. However, if we start, as we start to recover, if we start tailoring off on the open enrollment, we stay as high academic achieving and lots of opportunities for our kids' district. And that was the whole argument a while back. And then as far as the, you know, the revenue side of it, yeah, it's important, because we're gonna talk about how much they've reduced our revenue from the state for the next school year. And coincidentally, and it's coincidentally, we didn't plan it that way, but it's about the number that the 72 would bring in. That's how much less we're getting from the government next year. We need it to maintain an even keel for our kids, otherwise we're gonna be going up and down and up and down.
What about support staff for these kids?
Um...
Other than just teach them, I mean, there's more to it involved.
Sure.
Kitchen help, special ed teachers.
The, the population stayed the same though. What I'm saying, not, what Joel said was, what our population was 10 years ago, we lost 378 of those kids. We brought 379 of those kids back in. So we're really feeding one more kid, aiding one more kid than we had 10 years ago.
So all that, that structural support staff is there?
It's, was there, well, I don't know, because you guys made some cuts before I got here. I don't remember who you all cut the year before I got here. Librarians, and...
Librarians, I think.
So there were, there were some cuts that were made philosophically, and philosophically based on the readings, I would rather have certified people in front of the kids than non-certified people. So if that means principal, and principals in the past have come up to me and said this, look, we know we have a zero-based budget, zero-based increase, but if I can trade off these two positions for this one position, and if that's what they think is best and is gonna increase academic achievement in their building, I don't stand in their way.
So we wouldn't have a lot of these AP courses if we didn't have the number going into high school?
Absolutely.
And how full are our schools? 'Cause I, I hear Mr. DiCristo say his school's full.
'Cause he used to, remember when we made the switch and made his a three...
We also annexed part of Hills Corners.
Right. So it was to balance the classrooms a little bit better, I guess is a better way, can't think of an accurate way of saying it, but, so we made HCE a four section, Hills Edutain a three section, and that was to predictability of where you're gonna have kids year after year and staffing. 'Cause remember, we had some times when, actually the board, I didn't recommend increasing open enrollment, but they used open enrollment to add numbers to a fifth grade so that we could get a third section and reduce the class size down to the 20 to 25 range.
So ultimately, when, when the question is asked, and it's gonna be asked, are we building, are we proposing to build this new HCE for our kids or for open enrollment kids?
Absolutely, I mean, the mass majority of our kids are resident kids, and what the information you're gonna get at the first February board meeting is gonna show you the Applied, Applied Science lab projections. I don't know if you got a chance to talk with them at the convention or not, but...
He wasn't handing out anything good.
I, I asked him about ours. That was good though. Yeah, you're right, they didn't have any good thing there. But anyway, get it?
He needs like free stuff. Coupons that would like this...
That's what I'm talking about.
They, they did a nice projection for the next 10 years, and I think when our public sees that, they're gonna go, oh, it really is a good idea then to build this Hills Corners Elementary School. I think they'll see that.
'Cause I mean, that question's coming up.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're projecting, we're gonna trade them back off.
Let me give those two a chance to talk and then come back to John, if that's okay, or unless you guys wanna jump in first?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So if we add the 72 open enrollment students, that would bring our non-resident population to about 19 percent. What are other schools in the area? How much, what percentage of their student population are open enrollment? Do we, do you know? I know Greendale has a pretty high percentage.
Greendale, you, always, Greendale and Greenfield were always above ours, I don't know if they still are or not. St. Francis absolutely is. I just, at the convention, sat down with John and talked about that. And the, the money that, that follows a student, and there's two parts to this discussion. One is, there's, we're going to have school districts without borders, if we don't already, where it's a voucher in every backpack, and they don't care what school you go to, here's your voucher. For us to be a winner in that scenario, we have to provide, I mean, we have to emphasize that this is a community school, has community support, and because it's a community school, we can do all these other things that other schools, schools can't do. So maintaining the, the number of offerings at the high school is important as compared to a much smaller high school where I didn't have even a quarter of the options when I went to my high school in the neighborhood. So, I don't know, I think I lost the question, the answer.
The question was, how do we compare to other schools in the area as far as open enrollment?
There's at least two or three that are higher than us, there's some that are less than us, and school just, I, the losers in this are the ones that can't attract because they lose huge amounts of revenue, and then the students go, and then they have to cut programs, and they're down to bare bones, and, and that's a, that's a much tougher scenario. This is a, this is nice to be able to have this discussion, because we have people that wanna come here.
So, you know, I mean, I, I'm good with the grade nine and the grade one and the kindergartens and stuff, because in the past, we never added to a seventh or eighth grade like that, so, but you're saying is that we can put 29 seats open in eighth grade and not get 29 kids.
That's true. The second reason, which I forgot to say, was Kathy, if she's feeling better, can say, but if, she called DPI and said, if we added one kid because of a family, they said, then you, then you broke your, your agreement, and you would not win any of your appeals. Over the past five, six years, until, actually until Kathy came, I don't know that we won a single appeal, because we were all over the place. They want you to have a set number, K5, a set number, 6'8", and a set number, 912, which is why this is a little bit different this year. The K5 is very similar, almost identical. I agree with you, our, and I agreed with the board in the past, that the idea, ideal is to get them in sixth grade.
Right.
When those numbers are low at sixth grade, rather than seventh and eighth, and it saves Lynn and Brian a lot of headaches trying to break in new kids coming from different schools. So ideally, you'd like them to come in at sixth grade. The number 27, you know, and I know, I've talked with a number of different board numbers, I'm not married to that. If you wanna make it 26, then you're not bringing in seventh, then you're bringing in a smaller number at eighth. So, you know, whatever the board decides to do, it's kinda like the referendum, we'll do whatever the board wants, the board will do what our community wants us to do, you know, so, we're presenting, this is the issue, this is what we think is the best solution. So it's up to you if you agree or not.
Okay. Jonathan, do you have questions?
Um, just one thing, when we're talking about the students needing more help, I think we need to be cautious with labeling that, because it could come across in a negative way that's not meant when we say it. I think additionally, that if we wanna look at it from a perspective that we offer a strong education, that if it wasn't for open enrollment, many of these children wouldn't have an opportunity to take advan, take advantage of. So it's a great way to look at it from that perspective. We give them something. Again, do we wanna do it at the cost of our students suffering? No. But it does give us an opportunity to help, maybe make a difference. I mean, I saw growing up as a kid, going to a private school where it gave kids a chance that life otherwise wouldn't have had, and the impact it made. So I'm just speaking from that perspective of seeing how it affected people and giving them a chance on life that otherwise they wouldn't have had. And I think, I don't know, I think the 19 percent, hopefully if we can tell people that 19 percent are non-residents, that'll answer the question of if we're building HCE for them. I mean, that's my hope. It's just simple math, hopefully it makes sense across the board. And, you know, I, you look at the numbers of high schools in the area, and it still blows my mind how small our high school is, in terms of students. And we're gonna lose attrition for kids leaving eighth grade, not going to high school because they want to go to parochial high schools, whatever the case may be. So you've gotta build that in, and you're not going to gain as many kids to replace that coming in beginning of freshman year. So any way we can bridge that gap, I don't know what that looks like, what that means, and Lynn obviously has a better idea than me, but if there's a way to increase the pool in middle school, you have a better chance of having higher numbers in high school with that attrition built up.
Have we been posting attrition between eighth and ninth grade?
Go ahead, John.
Well, it's just in relation to his statement, have we been posting attrition? Do we register attrition between eighth and ninth grade?
I understand your thought, but there's so many kids coming out of the K8 parochial schools. Like Hills Corners Lutheran is huge, St. Mary's is pretty big, and so we actually gain kids going from eighth grade to ninth grade, from those parochial schools. So we don't actually lose kids, there's a couple that'll go to Martin Luther, but that's pretty, and some will go to Pius, but that's pretty much it. But the, the high school is for sure is the area where you want to maintain your program so the kids have those AP opportunities, and you're only, you only use open enrollment as a tool. It's a, well, I like the way you said, you know, with heart, that you're helping people at the same time. So it, it's a positive thing, but what it does is it helps us bridge the gap when we have an older population that still has the houses, until they move out and then the families come back in. And you'll see that predictability when we have that presentation, the first week in February, or second week in February, Monday, whatever that is, the ninth, whatever it is. I think you'll see that, and that'll also help get, and Dave explained that better in our communications, that this is really a positive thing. And it's kept our school performing well. You're absolutely right, it's, we, we have people that, our staff is absolutely the best at the elementary and at the middle school and at the high school. It's the administration that we're trying to come up with the best formula to give them that little bit extra advantage to get even higher. And that's what we're trying to do, so it's a school of excellence straight across. And staffing is, you guys already have those tools in place.
Okay, anything else, Adam?
No, thank you.
John?
Okay, so, y'all set? Quinn?
Got tip, we're going.
All right, man. We'll use one color tonight. So what, what I, I just out of curiosity, Lynn, did we, did we add many kids in this last semester, in the middle of the semester, or the middle school?
Uh, we did, not, I wouldn't say many. We did get some at the beginning of the year, I wanna say around a dozen, K8, and then we did have some, you know, move in after the beginning of the year.
Do you have any idea what our net was at the middle school, 678, for the semester, our net?
I wanna say, we're up to from last year, Joel tells me, you know, it kind of evens itself out because some, some leave.
Alrighty. And then the other question is, I mean, how was our actual flow between what's moving out by graduating and what's coming in overall? I mean, I know that's what we're looking at, but when we start talking about, I mean, I completely agree with you about providing other kids opportunity. Right now, as of the March 17 numbers, we're providing that for 399 kids. So the question is to go up by another 72. And it's, it is, it's, it's actually the, the overall environment in the classroom I'm, I'm concerned about. It's, it's, remember, it's not just our kids and the, and the quality of their experience, it's also the teachers and the quality of their experience. We talk about being a destination, destination district, we need to look at that for both the students and the teachers, because when you have continuity with good teachers, you also have better educational experience in the classroom, I would, I would think. I wouldn't think it'd be too hard to find a lot to back that up. We're talking about a community school with, at what point, 19 percent, 23 percent? I mean, at what point do you start losing your identity as a community school or a community school district? You know what I mean? I mean, where's, where's the cutoff for that? I think it's probably more of a personal, personal perspective by everybody, but I mean, that's one thing that I'm concerned about. We're nearly reaching, I mean, we're nearly reaching, you know, one-fifth of our student population, and it'll be almost exactly one-fifth of our student population if we go up 72 seats. At, at what point do we lose that sense of identity of, of community school? I don't know. But these are things we need to think about. I think you talk about balancing class sizes, and, and DPI talks about picking these target num, target numbers to balance them out. I guess what I'm saying is I think our target numbers are too high. I understand the idea of balancing them out, and, I mean, that's pretty easy math too, what was shown there, but, but, you know, if we, instead of calling it 27 per class, if we called it 23 per class, there goes your, there goes your 29 seats for grade eight right there, and is that really, is 23 per class too small? Is it about right? Is it too big? Do we need to cut more? Do we need to add more? I think 27 is potentially too high. I mean, if you look at one through five, the studies I saw targeted small class sizes, large class, or what they call regular class sizes, and, and then regular with aides, and they show a better correlation between, but teacher, a teacher-student ratio is a better correlation than a, than a teacher plus aide and student ratio, as far as, as far as their performance goes. So we start talking about adding aides, you know, I don't know that that helps us out either. So, and the small class... So, and the small class sizes were 13 to 17 in one of the studies I saw, and the regular class sizes were 22 to 25 for first through third grade. So, I mean, I, I think our numbers are too high to begin with.
Okay, um, final comment?
One last, one last thought. Yeah, and it's, it's absolutely your prerogative, but there's got to be a second piece to this. First, we set 23 as a very reasonable amount for, um, grades two through five, I believe it is. And you compare that to our neighboring districts, Franklin's 25 to 30, Greendale's 18 to 24, Greenfield's less than 30, Muskego-Norway's 25. These are all good districts. Uh, New Berlin, 23 to 27. You go up to grades six through eight, and they're at 28 to 30, 25 to 30, less than 35, 25 to 28. We're not jamming a bunch of kids in the classroom. However, if you, it, you know, you, it's strategic in keeping balanced class sizes. And the reason we did a 10-year comparison is because some years you'll have bumps because this is only a 2,400 student district, plus or minus. And so, some years you're going to have, um, a big, uh, I mean, it happens to be a happy birth year, and there's a lot of moms. And other years, there won't be. And so, you use open enrollment to, to kind of equalize it so you don't have those ups and downs. And you're laying off someone here, you're bringing them back here, laying them off here. And if you take away the, I mean, disregard that. First of all, anybody that appeals any application automatically will get in, and if we don't have something. And then if we do reduce our budget by, say, $450,000, we need to start the discussion on where are you going to get that money to balance our budget? You know, how many people is that and at what grade levels?
I just want to ask Joel, did, did you use the new policies for open enrollment?
Absolutely.
Good.
Okay, so, um, Doug, did you have anything you wanted to add to this conversation?
Well, I think Lowell already covered it, but I, I would just, in terms of numbers, um, the DPI got a revenue limit worksheet out this year earlier than normal. And under current law, uh, we could be looking at, um, less revenue limit for next year by about $400,000 than we had for this year. And only resident kids count in the formula that's used for the revenue limit. If we're down that much, we, and as Lowell said before, it's just a coincidence, um, that the number of kids times the per pupil would be relatively close to the, um, revenue limit that we expect to lose for next year at this point in time. It's early in our budget process and in the states, but preliminary numbers they're talking about have us with actually a lower revenue limit next year than we have this year.
Okay, well, I can't really add much more than what, what I've heard here. I think I would agree that it is a good, I agree with the past practice that we would balance our enrollment through using open enrollment students. I think it benefits both our kids and the kids coming in. So, I, I have no problem with, um, as long as, as was stated several times by, by a couple of you, as long as we're not harming our kids, it, it appears to only help our students. Um, it's not about balancing a budget, it's about balancing enrollment. And it makes sense that the state funds us based on our enrollment. So, as enrollments go up and down, so do our budgets. But in this case, we are fortunate to have, you know, a district that attracts new kids that want to come here. And I, let me, let me just, let me just finish my comments. Um, the only other thing, uh, to John's point, I think if, if we need to know about class sizes, we should actually maybe even have a workshop on that. I know there are DPI recommended, um, class sizes out there that we tend to follow. Um, and, and those are based on research of what's good. And I know it's lower at the elementary and higher at the middle, and then it gets even higher at the high school level. Those aren't exact, it's not an exact science because it so much depends on the student in the classroom. If you have a lot of students that can't speak English, you know, that's going to be much harder to teach than, you know, a classroom that has all English-speaking kids. So, there's a lot of factors that go into these class sizes and what's needed in each individual classroom. And we really do charge our administration to, to making all of that, all of that work. So, all this discussion about class sizes, I just, the one thing I think we haven't talked about, what matters most is the teacher in the classroom. And there have been studies that show even smaller class sizes at the smaller, at the elementary level don't always equate to higher learning as the years go on. It does show that it, that they do better in elementary. So, I'm not advocating we raise our, our numbers. But in the end, it's what our teachers do in front of those kids that really matters the most. And again, I'm not advocating we up the numbers, but, um, so I'm glad we're taking a look at this. The board has to be able to answer these questions, and I think it's good to take a look at it. I would support these numbers based on, um, the conversation we've had tonight. So, uh, let's see, Eileen and then John?
Um, if we go that direction, that's fine. The only suggestion I would have is maybe tweak the eighth grade number. You're going to bring in 29 if you get them all. That would bring you up to your, what your higher level is. Last year at seventh grade, we had 11 more residents come in than what we had originally projected for. So, I don't know if you want to always bring it up to the highest projection. And I mean, it's, I mean, split hairs, but it's just a thought that, you know, what, do you want to start at your highest number, knowing that last year, for example, one grade you brought in 11, 11 more than you thought you were going to bring in?
And so, that would be under item C, correct? We, you might propose lowering that number under item C. Okay, John?
Okay, so, I don't have it in front of me. Can you remind me of the, uh, the, um, recommended, uh, or designed, I'm sorry, the desired class size, sizes for this year?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of weird, the elementary. 27 for middle school and...
This number here?
Yeah.
You've got that.
No, you're recommending the desired class sizes, sizes for 2015, 16. Do we have a recommended, what was recommended for this year?
It was very similar. Um, I think 4K and kindergarten were 20. Um, one through five was definitely 23. And six through eight was 29, but we only had six sections.
We did 27.
Was it 20? I thought we did 29.
We recommended 27 this year.
Yeah, last year.
Six through eight?
Last year was six at 28 for the middle school.
Last year was six at 28, okay.
This year, we're in now.
This, this year, this 13, or 14, 15. Yeah, those were what we did last year.
So, I was trying to follow. You said it was, uh...
Last, when we did the recommendations last year, I think 4K and kindergarten, we were at 20. Um, one through five was 23, and six through eight was 28, Eileen, you said? But we only had six sections.
Right, six sections of 28.
And then nine through 12, did we have a, uh...
Nine through 12 was the same, the 204.
Okay, no change, right. Okay, um, what, Doug, you, you mentioned that, and so did Lowell, we're looking at maybe a half a million dollars less from the state this next year based on the worksheet or...
Yes, based on current law and the worksheet that companies have.
Is any of that related to our projected, uh, enrollment without these additional seats? In other words, you say how much we get from the state also relates to how many kids we have.
Right.
So, was any of that loss, any of that projected loss in relation to any projected student population loss without these seats? That we're...
No, I'm making, at this point, I'm making the assumption that our September membership next year will be the same as it was this year.
Okay.
And part of my basis for that is, um, for example, I just today got the, uh, January membership count and compared it to last year's January count, and there's a difference in one student.
Okay, good. Um, and then, uh, uh, and, uh, one, one thing you mentioned, Luanne, about, um, later grades and such. The research I saw indicated when they did a, when they, when they did projects with small, what they identified and labeled as small class sizes, 13 to 17, in the early years. And then they tracked those students as they went with regular class sizes with other students in later years, even though they were no longer part of a special small class size. Those students did, statistically significantly, they did perform better than the ones that were not in the small class sizes in early years. So, it does make a difference in that.
Okay.
Um, and I guess I maintain that I would lean towards, I understand the idea of a, uh, recommended or desired class size. I would just recommend that we work our class sizes down, not up.
Okay, so Kathy has a comment, and then I think we can vote.
Two pieces of information. Um, the, the recommended last year for the 14, 15, for sixth through eighth grade was 29, six sections, 174 total. I'm looking at last year's packet. Um, and then the other thing is, is that if we tweak the eighth grade seats, we would also need to tweak the seventh grades with seats. Because you have to determine a class size that you want to arrive at for sixth through eighth grade, use the formula. And then you would prob- if you're going to change the eighth grade numbers, then that's going to change the seventh grade numbers also.
So, you'd have to do like...
You have to, you have to say...
Like 26 in a class?
Yeah, so if you go to 26 in a class, then you have to rework the formula and make sure that the formula fits for all the, the six through eighth grade levels. Because DPI had told me that if we do not follow formula, if we break it for one grade level, they won't support us on appeals for any grade levels.
Okay, then, um, are we ready to vote on consent agenda number A? Approval of acceptance of open enrollment applications of current attending Wittenall students. So, this would just approve the current students.
I'll make a motion to approve A.
Been moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seeing none, motion carries. Item B, approval of class size parameters for use in determining open enrollment seats. I would entertain a motion to approve the current class size, the proposed class size recommendations. So, moved, been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
So, motion carries for two. And then item C, open enrollment seats for 2015.
For two?
I'm sorry, for C.
No.
Did I say it right?
Six adds up to six.
Seven people.
I knew that.
Four to two.
And I, but I didn't hear Eileen.
I did the math, so I don't forget.
I said nay.
Okay.
Right.
Um, so consent agenda item four C, approval of open enrollment seats for 2015, 16. I would entertain a motion to approve the seats as proposed. So, moved, been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
So, motions carry for two. All right, on to the next item, uh, the approval of the 2015, 16 school calendar. And who pulled that one out?
Oh, I did.
You did. Okay, go ahead.
Um, I just had a, I had sent one, well, there were two things. There was a note about the February date that I had sent that I don't know if it would be possible to move it up so it would be off for the, for Martin Luther King on that Monday versus the Friday that was proposed. Um, and that was kind of coming from the parental side. Um, so I just throwing that out there. And then I also noticed that we did add another day in December. Um, but that's more just an observation.
Okay.
Well, it looks like February 15 is a Monday, right?
Yeah.
Oh, did they change it? Okay. It was a January one. No, you know what? I'm sorry, it's a January one.
January.
The 22nd.
All from 18 to 27.
Yeah, and I don't, you know, I don't know what the reasoning, you know, yeah, academically was.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, it's, uh, designed so that teachers have the opportunity to have a workday. It's to benefit and make, or, you know, give them the time to get the grades done instead of expecting them to do it all at night after school.
So, you want it after the semester?
Yeah.
That's Friday versus the Monday.
Your reasoning is spot on, but, um, to do that, you'd have to take that opportunity then, or have another day. Which we also give that option to our teachers if they want it.
Amazing.
Um, I think it's great, Lowell, that you had a lot of input into the calendar, um, you know, and that you limited half-days. That was a good thing. Um, my only concern on the calendar is the December 14, um, day off. You come back from Thanksgiving, the kids are in school for two weeks, you have a day off, then they're in school for six weeks, or six days, and then you have, you know, Christmas vacation. I think, I don't know why you wouldn't maybe move that to have an extra day over the Thanksgiving holiday and have moved the 14th to November 30th or something like that so that there's a, a bigger block of time for the kids. It seems like they're just getting started with something, and then they have another day off and then get started again. They're getting ready for, to go on their holiday, you know, break, and then, um, so it doesn't, doesn't flow very well to me.
We're trying to make December the best month of the year.
We'll define how, so that's my other comment on that.
Is her birthday in there or something?
No.
Okay. So, you have, okay?
Thoughts on it?
Um, do you have a suggestion? You said the Thanksgiving?
Well, uh, yeah, I mean, why don't you move it to November 30th so that, uh, everyone has a longer, um, time off and, or the kids have a longer time off? And then that you don't break up the time between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Piggyback either of the breaks, right?
Well, they're trying to have a development day each month, correct?
Yeah.
They would put two in November.
Right.
Or if you did it on the 22nd of December to extend, uh, Christmas break one more day?
Mm-hmm.
Do that as the last day of break, it's a development day.
Um, Tony, you do the staff development, any problems with either one of those suggestions?
Um, well, the feedback that we've gotten in the past is that a one-day school week is a good one for kids.
Yep.
Yeah, I could see that.
So, trying to avoid that. Um, you're correct in putting, what we're looking for is enough time to have student data in between. We give common assessments to talk about it. So, if we only have them spaced a couple of weeks apart, for example, putting it on, um, November 30th, that would only give us, um, two weeks and two days of instruction to try to get assessment results, plus that's when they have all the testing going on. So, it was spread out based upon, uh, the academic calendar.
I guess, to go with that thought, the only other thing is to move that to the 4th of January. Either, either side of the, uh, Thanksgiving thing or the 4th of January, or leave it where it is.
But then they don't have a day in December, though.
Right.
So, um, I, I just don't favor tinkering with that part because I think they've set those dates and they got feedback on that. And, um, maybe our suggestions might be good, but we're not the ones in the system doing the work. So, I would prefer, I mean, I guess I would prefer that we stick with this calendar for those, for this year. Um, my question would be around the number of days. If I'm counting right, we have 100, and, and maybe I don't do the math right, but 180 days plus there's 11 teacher workdays, which puts us at 191. And I'm, I'm thinking we added a day for our teachers. Did we do that?
Look, this year's calendar is one year, maybe, of days.
This year's is the same, 191, um...
Actually, 180, we have current this year, 180 student days and 11 staff.
Right. Why is it one day higher than the staff handbook and the board policy?
Actually, the board policy says that, um...
I think the school year shall be 191.
The staff handbook says the standard calendar shall consist of a minimum of 190 days.
For the, for the teachers?
Uh, it just says the standard school calendar shall consist of a minimum of 190 days.
Okay, so you can go above that? And we've done that?
Yeah, so the, the idea is that it also, as a minimum, the state number required regular school days, um, needs to be built in that, so...
I think that's why our kids are so smart.
Well, compliments to our teachers because they really work hard. And, um, I, I can support this calendar. I just had a question about that because I'm still trying to figure this out.
And Dr. Boltsid formulated a group and we had listened, um, part of, and we have 191 days this year and we have 191 days next year, but part of the 191 days next year are actually four half-days for, for actual staff work time, not staff development. So, four half-days equals two full days that are built into next year's calendar for teachers to actually have work time rather than having that time scheduled for professional development or tying that up. So, technically, um, that work time is not built into this calendar this year and hasn't been built in for a number of years. Um, so, if you add up four half-days, that's the equivalent of nearly two full school days that we're working with our staff to give them some time to get the records straight at the end of the grading periods and get things squared away, which for the past couple of years, they've been doing on their own time outside of that time, so...
That's a nice change.
So, um, was, was there also, uh, a change in state law about days, contact days? Was there also a change in state law about days, contact days, contact minutes, anything like that? I thought, I thought I heard something about that. What was that?
They dropped the face-to-face and went with minutes rather than number of days. And that's mostly to benefit some of the northern Wisconsin schools with their busing, so they can reduce their busing days, which are expensive.
Yeah.
Increase their minutes.
Yeah, because we used to have a number of contact days, we had to hit and face-to-face time minutes, and you're saying that they took one of those elements out, the days thing. Okay, all righty.
All right, then. I guess I would entertain approval of the 2015-16 School Calendar. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. Next up, on the agenda is Old Business, a Report on the WASP Convention. And we could probably talk all night on just this, but let's be brief and talk about what we learned at the convention. Who wants to start out?
Sure, I will. I went to, went on safety in regards to Sandy Hook Elementary, and they had, they had the report of all how it transpired, and very interesting, very, very interesting. It really catches my interest. And there are some things, there's some things that I will bring up in the Policy Committee that I got from this. And if our couple of teachers that are in attendance are still here when we're done, I would like to talk to them. I also went to a referendum meeting. Good solid information. Thank God Kit and Dave were there to calm me down after.
[laughing]
And I went to hot topics, hot topics in policy. And one of them was open enrollment, new, new policy for open enrollments. One was the Student Awards and Scholarships, the Techno Excellence for Higher Education Scholarships. And I have to say, with listening to other board members in the room, that Joel and his group did a really good job of getting our policy in front of, which we passed tonight. And there was a lot of little chatter that I heard, and talked to a couple of people, that they weren't, they weren't where we are. So I'm really, really happy that that's where it is. And as always, it's just so wonderful to hear the music that the, the kids at the different school districts, that they come up and play different music and sing. It's, that's, that's probably one of my most favorite parts of the whole thing. And I'm not sure how you go about that, but I hope that our music department and band department try and submit for that.
We should do that.
It's pretty neat. And it's just amazing the talent that is out there. And I, you know, and I have a child, I have two children in the music program, and, and I think that from listening, I think that we, we could, we could stand our own ground there too as well. So it is a great thing, and then we get to listen to the state superintendent and the governor. And a little disappointed that the governor didn't speak to Common Core. He brought up one really good point, and I know we all took, took note of that, that we need to promote the two-year college degree, like we do the four-year college degree, and all our information, and all of our handouts, and I think we're going to get that going.
We do, actually. I looked-
Is it already on there?
We do.
And it does give the number of students that went on to four-years, and the number of students that went to two-years.
That's great.
So there are alternative pathways.
You made a good point. I think we all-
Sends a message, sends a message that both of those are important.
And my wife told me that us three were on TV. The backs of us, but we were on TV.
Famous Whittenall school board.
That's all I know.
Okay.
Well, I guess what I want to touch upon is, because we had been spending so much time on buildings and buildings and referendums, that I just, what I got out of it was, again, about the children, you know, and that the theme of it is every child, every day. And so it kind of re, kind of refocused me back onto, you know, the students. And then I attended a session on community engagement, so that was kind of interesting, as someone who, districted something similar like what we did with forward thinking. So it was kind of interesting to hear their background. I also did one on building business partnerships with education, which is something that we are trying to, you know, continue to work on. So that was, you know, I found that very helpful as we move forward with trying to build some of those relationships. And I did also attend one on compensation.
Same here. I went to a couple on referendums, and it was, it's just so interesting that every community is different, every need is different. So it was great to hear two different, complete ways that the boards worked with their communities on referendum processes, so. And then finally, the, I also went to a session on teacher pay, and very happy to tell you that I think we should just take a look. I know we have a committee working on it, but I, you know, highly hope, hope that the committee looks at Greenfield, and maybe that could come up through Personnel pretty soon, I hope. They've got it all on their website. So there's, you know, they're going with the four levels of teacher practice. They're actually aligning it totally with the educator effectiveness, but they're just not adding the student, the SLOs to the equation at this time. They're just taking the best practices that all of our teachers are now being evaluated on, and they're using a rubric, which their teachers designed, and I love that, because then they're going to look at improving their practice, either meet, exceed, in the summative, and then there's formative, there's all kinds of evaluations. But they've got it all laid out, and even a layperson like me could somewhat understand that. So I hope that our district takes a look at that. I pass that off to you to maybe hand off to the committee at some point. They might want to. But it's all on the website in Greenfield, so that's my take. That's it on WASP Convention. Next up is New Business, A Discuss Referendum Communications and Outreach Plan. And I'll turn that over to Dave.
Well, thanks for having me again. We are ten weeks out from the referendum date, which is seventy days. And I want to let everyone rest assured we're in good shape, okay? So that's where we'll start out. So the last several weeks, myself, Kit Daly from Obsene Union, and Kevin Hickman, who are both here today from JP Cullen, we've been meeting as a team, along with two more members of Kevin's team, working on the communications plan for the referendum questions that will be on the ballot in April. Those meetings have been just kind of revolved around when we're going to start making information available to the public, that, information that they don't already have. And really making a timeline as to when we're going to produce some of these items, when they're going to be mailed, when they're going to be distributed, when we're going to have informational meetings, and all those things. So in the board packet that you received on Thursday, you had this, this communication plan, the draft of the timeline. This kind of highlights a lot of the different mechanisms and ways we'll be getting information to the public. There's opportunities for the board to participate in some of these informational meetings, the open houses. The piece that we're working on right now to get things going, I should back, back check. We did have two pieces that went out earlier in November. I mean, the survey certainly is an informational piece that went out to all district residents and was available online, so. And prior to that, the last viewpoint also had a large story on a superintendent's message, both talking about our referendum needs, or our facilities' needs. So, so if anyone's concerned that things haven't been getting out to the public yet, if it's not the case, we'd have already put out two, basically two district-wide mailings that have started the process in informing people of what our facility needs are. Since then, the district website has had information on all the updates that, as the process has gone through over the last several weeks, about what the board's decisions have been. It was updated, people on upcoming meetings. So we have, we had, the information has already been out there. The big piece that we're working on right now is the, well, the next viewpoint, which will be mailed, the plan is to mail that in mid-February. It goes to the printer on Friday, and through a bit of a turnaround time, so. So that, and inside the viewpoint, the big piece that is taking a lot of time to put together, pull together, because there's several teams working on it, is the fact sheet. You received a copy of the, a hard copy of the wording that we're working off of right now to pull together our fact sheet. I think you received that on Friday afternoon, right? It was right after we had another core team meeting. They received that. So that's the, kind of the baseline of all of our communication pieces, that's really going to answer just four or five basic questions, and those being what our needs, why we're going to referendum, what the tax impact would be, what the cost would be to the, to the taxpayers. And once, once we build that piece, we're going to use that in the viewpoint. That will be coming out, like I said, in a couple of weeks. It's also the, kind of the piece that we use at all of our informational nights, any open houses. It just, again, it's, it's information to let everyone become a better informed voter come April seventh. So I'm going to go through the timeline real quick and just point out a few highlights. We are really covering all our bases. I mean, we have print products, we have social media, digital media, and some other things. So if you have the timeline in front of you, if not, I can, I'll scroll through and just show you some of these things. As I mentioned before, we do have the viewpoint coming out. We'll have another mailing. We haven't figured out the format of that mailing yet, but there will be another district-wide mailing, kind of like a special referendum newsletter. Again, just providing more information to, to the district residents, informing them as to why, why we have needs and what those needs would cost if they were to vote for the referendum. And then later in March, also on the, we have another, the very last thing on the schedule is another all-district mailing, which would be a postcard, just reminding voters to vote, because every vote counts. Some of the things in between there, though, we have the use of, obviously the use of social media, which we'll be using Facebook and Twitter. Again, sharing information about what will be on the, on the ballot, letting people know when our next open houses will be, letting people know how they can get more information from us. We, we also have what's called the Roadshow, and that'll be something where we hope to go to all the civic groups in the area, the Chambers, the Woodland Park Rotary Club, anybody else who will have us and want to listen to our presentation. We'll be putting together a schedule for that. We'll be putting together a schedule of open houses, both here and at Hales Corners, to allow people to tour the facilities, show them, like I said, show them some of those basic needs that we've been talking about, just to give them an idea. You know, I'm sure there's a lot of people in the community that haven't been in either of the buildings in a long time, if at all. This will be an opportunity for them to come and see what we're talking about. The Superintendent's School Board Open Door is another opportunity for people to come here, visit with Dr. Holtz and any of the board members. It's a schedule that will be put together with your input. Again, inviting the public to come in, daytime, afternoon, evening, whatever works best for everyone, and whatever we think we can draw the biggest crowd, again, just to inform people of what's happening. The FAQ, the top ten FAQ sheet, that's something we're working on. It's obviously, it's obvious, we want to answer, we want to answer anybody's questions, and we're going to put together the FAQ, just to let people know that those obviously are things that, you know, the questions that the community has are things that we've all thought about already, and we'll be providing answers for them. So it'll be in a nice, easy fact sheet to check out. And as far as, if you're confused as to what some of the acronyms there, WSB is obviously the School District, UA is Obsene Architects, and JPC is JP Cullen, Construction Management Firm. Again, strategy and production, a lot of, we're working as a team, and I think that's kind of what the biggest thing here is, that everyone's going to be working as a team throughout the next ten weeks, because it's not just, you know, it's not just one of us in this room doing this, it's a whole, the whole group collectively. The timeline, as you see, this doesn't really even date back to when we really started all this. This is just the first day we picked to kind of get things going on the calendar. Things have been in the works prior to January twelfth. January nineteenth, obviously, was last week when, when the resolutions were passed, so that really kicked things in the gear. Some of these other abbreviations, NR would be a news release, GE would be a potential guest editorial for the now news sites, either something that a board member could write, or something superintendent could write, again, just talking about the needs of the district. These highlighted marks, just so that you understand what they are. Again, this is for the viewpoint. And you can see it takes several weeks to get things from production to, final production, to the printer, and get it out to the public. So that's why there are those, those darkened areas, just to let you know that those are things that don't just happen overnight. They take some time to get them produced, get them to the printer, and then get them out to the public. And then April seventh is election day. Unless you have specific questions about this timeline, I just want to show you a few more quick things.
Hey, do you, you-
Yes?
On the website, you're going to have a text calculator tool?
Yes, that is something that Baird is providing to us, I believe. They've provided other-
Yeah, it's actually a really nice tool, essentially an Excel doc, that we can load in HTML code, and, so that you can go in for each question, you can put in your home value, and it'll have a little description of what fair market value is, so you know what to look for in your tax bill. So if your home is worth two hundred and twenty-six thousand, you would type in two hundred and twenty-six thousand, and it would automatically calculate the yearly and monthly impact of each referendum question for you. So it helps us take the, you know, math out of the formula, the guessing for people about what, how it will impact them. So Lisa's working on that right now. Expect to see a draft of it, and then we just make sure that the language aligns with ours, and then we get it up there.
Great.
The-
Oh, John.
Wait a second.
John.
And it does, does it clarify at all that it's a twenty-year thing? Because some people have said, is this just for one year? No, no, it's twenty years, so.
Yeah, it'll be in the footnote.
Okay, thanks.
And will we also put the frequently asked questions and keep that up and running on our website?
Yeah, I'm-
We can tell you what we're getting asked.
Yeah, we're building the-
All the time.
We're building the website on the backend now, all right?
Okay.
So it's, we're populating it with-
We want to get information.
News coverage and any information that we have. So that's already in the works, is just need to get it out. Just need to hit okay, and it's good to go.
But that's your, I mean, actually, that's a great point, Luann, that one of the most impactful things you guys can do as board members is to be that conduit of information to us. You're out there, people are stopping you in the grocery store, and in church, and in soccer practice, and wherever, and we need to know what people are asking you, so that we can constantly address that. So the FAQ document, in fact, the whole website, is really your most active tool for constantly evolving, adding information. And, you know, we're going to put together kind of a top ten FAQ sheet to start with, but quite frankly, it's pretty rare at the end of, by the time the referendum will be here, that we wouldn't have twenty or thirty or more questions. So there might be FAQ part two that comes out in, you know, six more weeks. So it's really, the resource that I would recommend that you as board member use is the website as much as possible. So Dave's already in the process of working and talking to their web, your webmaster, who help facilitate your content and your actual web, web structure, so that we can make that as clean and easy as possible. So people will be able to click on an icon that's, you know, about the referendum, get directly to that page, and then be able to see things, break broken down, see the site plan, click here, see the tax impact, understand the cost, how does the cost break down? That's going to drop down, and you'll see the tax calculator, you'll see the breakdown of the cost summary, you'll see the tax impact chart, et cetera. So it's just a matter of production at this point, which is why so much stems from this first piece, this first fact sheet. And then once that's confirmed and in production, that pushes down into all the channels, and then we just keep adding to that and responding. So as you hear things, you let us know. And it, and one of the things that Dr. Holtz can do is make sure that you, you know, will craft an answer, you know, the answer to the question, and make sure that you have it. So you can always be on the same point about that. I mean, it's not good if there's an answer to a question, and each of you have a different answer, you know, so let's make sure we're being consistent.
I want to just touch on the fact sheet real briefly. Again, it is kind of the basis, and I know you have had a couple of days to look at that. We want to show you, just so you don't think that it just looks like a bunch of errors. This is a finished fact sheet from the Reasonal Creek Franklin School District referendum. So, I mean, we, you have a site plan on there, you have, again, all the information, usually two-sided. two-sided, and information on where they can get more information. That's the other, you know, that's one of the key elements of the fact sheet is where people can go for information if they want it or need it. So this, you know, this is just an example of what our fact sheet will, or an example of what our fact sheet could look like, and I'll show you quickly what I just got today. This is kind of how things, after a conversation on Friday with the core team, this is kind of how things.
That's essentially the referendum logo, if you will, a brand, so that top, that's the footer he's showing you, essentially, but that top logo, it's called, it's called a badge, for all intents purposes. That is the referendum badge that will be on everything that relates to the referendum. So whether it's a hard copy print material, it's graphic on the website, it's used as an icon for social media, et cetera. That is the identifying logo. And then that banner that streams from it is where the header goes, so it would say referendum fact sheet, or special referendum, or FAQs. So there's sort of a branding thing, that we're trying to create parallel identity with what you have, yet also be distinctive to the referendum, so when people start seeing it, they know that's about the referendum.
Do you have a site plan?
I do.
Can we give you feedback on this fact sheet?
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone have feedback on the fact sheet? I do.
One thing, just.
I want to give you a little feedback, and then can we go through the do's and don'ts?
Yeah, the fact, I'm sorry, all kinds of stuff going on.
Yeah, let's finish the fact sheet first.
Yeah, so real quick, the fact sheet, I just wanted to.
Before we get into do's and don'ts.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about that real quick.
Yeah.
I mean, one thing about the fact sheet is, obviously, there's a lot of facts to get out there. I mean, and we cannot print every fact sheet, or every fact, on a two-sided fact sheet. So, obviously, we have, we feel we've put together what is the most, the most important elements, the most important, it's really the top five FAQ, you know, the questions are, you know, what's included in the proposal, why it's needed, what the cost would be to the district and orders to the taxpayers, and where and when people can get more information. So the idea, or this, you know, this strategy, if you will, about, around the fact sheet is to provide the best information we can, and the most important information we can, in a two-sided sheet, because, again, we can't tell everyone about every single detail about every project, so.
A reader-friendly format, it's designed to be, what's happening, why are we doing it, why should I learn about it, where do I go to get more information? And it's also designed to be the first piece that's available immediately. So while it'll be inserted in the viewpoint as the full-wide school district, all residents in the district mailing.
It goes to the printer on Friday.
By the way, very critical deadline, we've already pushed it once. So it will also be a separate handout that we will printed, that you can all literally keep in your car, number one. Number two, distribute to all the buildings, distribute to all staff, put in any key locations in the community, as we work towards the next layer of community. So it's really important that we get that finalized, but it's also important that you're comfortable with it, because that's the core messaging going forward, you don't really want to change it dramatically after that.
I think it does capture our intent and our priorities very well. It does, it has everything in it. I just thought that, well, there were two other points, though. I thought that safety in HCE was the number one priority that we were really concerned about, and I know it's listed there, but it's down the list, and I just wondered if, it's not just the main entrance, it is safety for the whole building, so I would like you to take a look at that bullet point. Safety and security is what we heard about when we went out to Forward Thinking, and we listened to people way before we were even looking at facilities, so that would be my one point. And the second one, there were two things that I know that we looked at. We have no debt in this district, and I don't, I don't recall if that's in here, but I think that's a selling point there, is no debt, we have no debt. Passports have done a great job of maintaining this district, and we've done very, the taxpayers have done a great job. I think that should be pointed out, and the fact that, one of the other reasons we wanted to push this through this year, we felt it made sense, is because the interest rates are low. So when you ask me, when people ask me, and they are, why are we doing this, and why are we doing it now, it's because it's only going to cost more in the future.
That's why we have that chart in there.
We do have an interest rate chart.
I see that, but I just, I know, as you pull it together in a marketing plan, I'm just telling you what I'm having to tell people already, and when they're asking me, this is why we're doing it now.
Well, and I think that could easily be a third, Luann, that's why now.
Those were my, right.
To do with, that the district is currently debt-free, and.
And the third thing to take a look at again is, I don't think it accurately describes the condition of those locker rooms, and I don't know if you can, so I'm not suggesting this is written, but to correct, when you say a better entrance, I would say to create a privacy in the locker rooms, which is currently not, you know, currently, you can't access the pool without going through locker rooms, so I don't know.
I think that's going to be clarified by the site plans, which I'm going to show you now.
Okay, and then, I think it should be, it's just not as strong in here as it maybe could be, that you, you know, when you say upgrade lockers, well, that doesn't sound, I mean, upgrade locker room. When you say correct a situation or something where people have to walk through the locker room to get to the pool, that's a far different description than saying upgrade lockers. I'm just saying, if you could look at that language, if there's any way you could describe the truth of the situation, the way it really is in that locker room, I think that that's one of the main reasons we wanted to change this, along with the depth of the pool at this time. Just, those are my thoughts.
Oh, and I think the one thing that's missing on the pool is to talk about the diving. You know, yeah, we're, yeah, we're deepening it and widening it, but why are we deepening it and widening it?
Yeah, you might imagine that.
We're not saying specifically about for the divers.
Well, it doesn't mean regulations, right? I think it got eliminated as we were trying to cut, but, okay.
Yeah, you might want to take a look at that. Anything else?
And I guess, I don't know how you get out that.
There is a bullet point that says it. Renovated and expanded, both in depth and width, pool vessel along swimmers and divers to use the pool competitively.
Okay.
That's not on my sheet, so.
Not on mine either. Must be newer. So, yeah, and it's important, not just the diving, but also.
I have a draft copy of 123, and it's not in here.
It's not just the diving, but it's also using, going in off the edge, or starting blocks, you can't, so it's, so it's not.
I mean, regulations, right? I mean, what changed? Regulations, some regulations.
Absolutely, and it didn't get grandfathered, obviously, because too shallow, too shallow. Kind of stop kids from breaking that.
Looking at here under the reference, it's in here.
It's down here. It's in the proposed projects would provide under the.
Yeah, there's two places, we can't put everything in every bullet, so we tried to give a little more detail under the why, but we can take another look at that based on what you're saying, you want to see stronger language, or more descriptive language, I think is really what you're asking for.
Yes. And these are the site plans that will go in there?
Yes, and so I do have them up there. I wanted to show them to you because we had quite a bit of discussion at the core team meeting on Friday, and these were still being literally marked up before I left, right, when I left the opposite side. So there's two plans that, first of all, this is, the next layer, before our graphic designer starts working on them in another program, that actually improves the labeling and the color, and makes things bigger and more readable, I wanted your input about the plans itself and the content that we have on it right now, so that we can then make those final adjustments tomorrow and move it forward to the graphical designer. So what you see they've done, and Mark couldn't be here tonight, so I'm playing architect, apparently, what you see is, what you've seen before, and what we were using when you guys were looking at the options, was essentially a very, very preliminary site plan, essentially using the other school, Lake Mills, that site plan, just on your site, your, that floor plan, that building plan. So now this building has been specifically tailored to at least be the appropriate size for the program that you are proposing in the referendum. So the square footage is appropriate for the academic areas, it's appropriate for the gymnasium, which, if you remember, we reduced in size, things like that. Now, the other thing I just want to say, keep in mind, and we will have this labeled all over, this is a preliminary conceptual site plan, okay? The chances of this changing significantly are still pretty high, once, if the referendum passes and we move forward with true design, that's where staff get involved, that's where detailed conversations with all municipalities, everybody that's involved with this site becoming a reality. So Matt could jump in here anytime and back me up, I'm sure, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so what we need, what we need right now is an image for the referendum that helps people understand the proposal, and this is accurate, meaning this is where we think the building will go, this is where we're thinking preliminarily, how the site will flow, et cetera. And so this is accomplishable based on the referendum dollars and scope. So with that in mind, we're trying to keep high level, we can't, we don't have detailed floor plan to show anything inside it, we don't know what that will look like yet, we haven't designed it yet. So we're trying to make sure that people can understand what's new, where the existing building is, how that would, how traffic flow would work. The blue arrows are for parents, parent traffic, and where that is circled around. Yellow is for busing. We'll be indicating where the secure main entrance will be, and we're trying to take, to show the difference between what are sidewalk areas, what are hard surface play areas, where students spend a lot of time, specifically in the winter, we talked a lot about that, Lori. Yeah, yeah. So this is a high-level plan, but what we need is if there, you think there's something else that's really missing on here, then we would want to get that incorporated prior to graphic design. We are going to add the streets names, Janesville Road, it's Godcell, right? Is that correct, am I saying that? What is it?
Yeah, that's right.
112 over here, correct? So we do have some of those markers. We also know that Janesville Road reconstruction is happening, they're in the process of photoshopping that at the bottom, we just couldn't get it done in time for tonight's meeting. So at a high level, thoughts about this site plan that I can take back to the architects would be welcome.
So we're going to take all the traffic, parent traffic on Godcell, a two-lane road.
They talked when we were in the committee meetings about having parents be able to queue off of Janesville.
Over here, too.
And through there. That would be one thing to look at, if there's a way to queue traffic for parent drop-off off of Janesville into.
Maybe won't, because they have, I mean, at least on this drawing, because you have bus traffic coming out that way.
Right. We are trying to keep a clear separation between bus and parent.
I'm just saying, have we talked to the city about this?
I don't know if they actually have gotten that part in.
I don't.
I'm having traffic on Godcell.
Isn't that where it is now?
No, the buses are on Godcell, which is challenging for them to turn onto some of those very small streets, which, like 114, for instance, has one, has parking only a lot of them on one side, and also 113. So if parents are going to do pickup, a lot of our parents, you know, our kids live to the north, that walk or ride bikes, not as many exit to the south that are walkers or bikers, most of them head north. I don't know what media you're referring to, but I keep hearing from parents, they prefer to be on Godcell as opposed to coming off of Janesville as they are, because traffic, I mean, we literally can sometimes sit at a standstill, and the car come out just waiting, even with the improvements of Janesville Road and the flashing sign and all the rest, we can sit there at a standstill for, you know, five minutes or so, and up to five minutes, and waiting for enough clearance for someone to scoot out car by car.
I can't believe when they get, when we get to the next level, we can't work with parents to solve some of those issues.
It'd be a big part of the conversation.
That will be a big part of it in the future, okay.
And just real quick, piggybacking on that idea, will this design with the parking get some of the, the staff parking off of Godcell then, and then into the lots, so.
There's enough, there's enough spots in there to do that.
This field space compared to what we have now, how much do we lose? I know it gets moved, but square footage wise?
Same with the building, I'm wondering if we shouldn't put that on here.
You want to add the total square footage of the building?
I don't know if it has to be on here, but we have to have it somewhere.
My question, though, is.
I don't know what the field space and how comparison would be, existing versus not.
I would say it's comparable, I mean, we still have the same soccer field, the playground space, if you look at it in comparison to the building, looks almost, you know, similar.
Can we, can we verify that versus kind of, kind of think it is, you know what I mean?
Well, since that's a draft, I'm probably not going to do that.
Yeah, no, but I mean, at some point, I'd like to, I'd like to know.
We're specifically asking for, I can ask Mark to clarify, you want to know the field space area?
Well, it's just that, I mean.
Do you want to know if we lost green space?
That's what I'm talking about, but not just, not just green space in general, I thought I, I thought I kind of sensed the, not just green space in general, but specifically that larger field green space, the, the.
Athletic field, chimney field?
Yes, that's what I'm wondering is.
I heard say at the meeting on Friday, that I believe I came through, that was the same football.
Yeah, that's what I'm not saying, too.
That's what I thought I heard.
Well, I understand that you can, you can get the same dimension lines in there, but, you know, beyond that, I mean, you can, you can paint a football field on, on, you know, 20 acres, and you can paint it on 200 acres, it's just a matter of how much extra you've got beyond those lines. So I'm wondering about that overall rectangular green space, irregardless of the lines, you know, because there are many things that go on out there that are beyond just, just those, those lines, the soccer practices and all that stuff that goes on from the parking rec department, which is a big part of the community and all that. So that's what I'm wondering, is if we lose any of the, of the larger collective intact, continuous green space.
And where will that information be stored? Because I think.
That's a great FAQ that we put in the fact sheets.
That we're going to, we're going to need to know more than just this for that building. We're going to need to know, we're going to get ask details.
I know, but there's, there's.
How many, how many grades, and all of that should be somewhere, and not on this site map, but.
No.
It all should be somewhere, and we also.
But that's great breakdown of scope, person's absolutely appropriate to have those kinds of questions answered.
We, yeah.
There's also a timing issue, the site plans have to go into the fact sheet, which has to go to the printer.
I don't think we're tinkering with that, but I think we're going to need to know this.
Well, all I see here is a rough concept, which is what you're talking about, right? And that's all we're after right now. So that's what I'm wondering, is if, if in the rough concept, how does this collective intact rectangular green field compare to what we have now? That's all.
Ask Mark to get back to you.
I'll just, I'll just add real quick, that Oak Creek Franklin example that I put up there, they had a site plan of their, what they thought was going to be their layout, and from my understanding, it's not even close to what that was, because it changed over time. So it is very, it's a preliminary site plan, that's exactly what it is. So sometimes things, you know, after having conversations, if the referendum passes, you'll have conversations, say, hey, this is more important to us than that is, and you guys might move things around and shift things still, so.
The important thing is that the budget cannot be exceeded. The referendum budget that you will, are asking voters not to exceed, is driven by the program, and that program drives the budget. So that will come back to the conversations about any work that's done on the site plan, so that's, that's the reality right there.
So you're asking us if there's anything else we want to put on here, does this work for us?
And knowing that we're going to add the.
The street names and.
For sure, we can add the total square footage of the new construction, we can work that in as a footnote.
In the words preliminary?
Oh, yeah, that would be stamped everywhere.
Green space dimensions?
Pardon me?
Green space dimensions.
Yeah, you could put that on there, too.
Green space dimensions?
Yeah, that, again, that collective.
Your question.
Yes.
Okay, so then the other one you have is the pool. Actually, Captain, I didn't steal your fact. Shorted myself one, drying. So this is the floor plan for how we, we're trying to communicate the work specifically at the, at the pool, and I think the labels are pretty self-explanatory. We made some adjustments based on feedback from the core team on Friday, for example, we labeled the storage room, we labeled the mechanical room, we added, differentiated between the girls' and boys' locker rooms, space and renovation. We added a clarity that the second floor renovations are happening, but they're just not seen on there, started to get really messy as we tried to look at a way to maybe pull it out, it just was very hard to understand, so we're trying to, you know, incorporate the scope that will happen on the second floor into some bullets underneath. I think, I think to your earlier point, Luann, I think if this, when this image is inserted into the fact sheet, along with the what we're doing. inserted into the fact sheet, along with the what we're doing, I think it'll help people understand the scope of the work, that's the intent of the plans. And then we're also hoping to fit in a few external pictures of the windows and the external curtain walls that are kind of boarded up to talk about the energy efficiency, other scope of work at the high school. So rather than talk about that in a floor plan or anything which is not very effective, we're actually going to show images of that, if we can fit it in, so that's the challenge that we have next, but. Any thoughts on this pool image, does this help you, is there additional labels or information? I thought showing the existing pool footprint would be very helpful and people understanding what we're doing when we say we're expanding and deepening it.
I guess I have a question, where is the diving? I don't know if you
You don't see the diving boards?
Oh, those big, no, I did not see that those are diving boards, so
Okay, well, then you better label them, that was a discussion in the office, yep.
Yeah, they're red. Diving is an issue, and we
Should we also label the starting blocks?
Yes.
And
Because that's new.
Do you think we should mention the depth at all, or not?
Yeah, I actually thought that myself when I saw it tonight.
I think so, too. Yep. All right, anything else? If not, we'll move on to the
There is, there is, there is one thing, Amor, that's your second floor renovation is not shown, it says provide seating for the 100, 120, what is the, that's for the second floor seating, right?
Correct.
Do you have any thoughts on a pool deck seating, putting that projected capacity in?
I don't know what it is off camera, but
I think that would be relevant.
It's likely bleached, yeah.